We still have a couple of those.
See, they spilt that thing up.
Yeah, that was Cory Law was putting a brick on Jason.
Did he ever fix it?
No, I don't think he put it back.
I mean, it's seven twenty-nine, so it's close.
Yeah.
He had time to go to the restroom. He's like, yeah, you're fine, you'll make it.
And then while was in there, he went to the clock and put it forward.
Yeah.
So I had to go down.
All right, everybody silence your phone. We can't. All right. I saw Steve Golden today. So who's doing it? Are you going to give a summary? Do you want to give yours?
Yeah, we're just, I'm meeting with Brad and who the new copy person Thursday.
Okay, my clock says it's seven thirty. Call the meeting to order and ask you to call the roll, please.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Snavely?
I'm here. And I'll actually use the microphone. All right, at this time, we will have a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you're welcome to.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we will move then to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Agenda's approved and we will move to public participation. And we have the honor of hearing from Ms. Addison Green, who many of us know, and she is going to talk about the Girl Scout Gold Award presentation on light pollution. Hi, Addison.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Addison Green and I'm a Talalonda senior and this is my presentation for my Girl Scout Gold Award. So I already said I'm a senior, but I think this will, yeah, this will be my twelfth year of Girl Scouts. And so the Gold Award is the highest achievement that you can get in Girl Scouts and it's really focused on making a lasting impact in your community. And so I chose to spread advocacy on light pollution. So what is the problem? It's, so light pollution is the human-made alteration of outdoor light levels. It impacts wildlife and human health through our sleep schedules and it destroys habitats. It wastes money and energy and it contributes to climate change. So light releases some heat and power used to keep those lights running releases greenhouse gases sometimes. And lastly, it blocks our view of the universe. So what can be done? On the individual level, following responsible lighting practices, so make sure your light is useful, make sure it's targeted, low level, warm colored and controlled. And then for communities such as Oxford, you can pass dark sky friendly legislation. So you would go through Dark Sky International to become a certified dark sky community. Who is Dark Sky? So they're a nonprofit and they protect communities from the harmful effects of light pollution. And some things they do is they lead lighting projects for the community, like friendly lighting projects, and they also evaluate and certify dark sky friendly lights. And Ohio's chapter, you would contact Terry Mann or you could visit their Instagram and Facebook at Dark Sky Ohio. And then all general information for the entirety of Dark Sky International can be found at darksky.org, which is where a lot of this information can be found. So how would you become a dark sky place? So first, you would need to establish a connection with staff from Dark Sky. And then with that staff, you would determine the best fit category. For Oxford, that would be a community, a dark sky community. And then you would form your application, fill out your application, and then you would send it to the Dark Sky Places Committee where they would be the ones who finalize and look over it and award you the certificate. And there is a one-time two hundred and dollar fifty fee to begin the application process and it usually takes one to three years from initial inquiry to certification. So some eligibility requirements. To be a dark sky community, you have to be a town, municipality, or legally organized community and you have to show dedication to preservation of the night sky. So some criteria, criteria for the management, you need to coordinate with local authority to adopt dark sky friendly lighting policies. And you need to provide outreach events to residents and visitors that are help spread awareness on dark sky, just friendly things. And for nights, there's no requirements for night sky quality, but you should still participate in monitoring like how qual, how much quality you have with your night sky. And then how to prove commitment. So what they recommend is retrofitting all publicly owned lighting in, within five years. And make sure that your residents and business owners participate in the dark sky movement. You need to show success or provide examples of success of light control with private lighting or new developments. And you need to provide new opportunities to learn and engage with the night sky. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Addison. Does anyone have questions to Addison's presentation?
I'm curious why you picked this project.
Um, so, I mean, where we live, you can see like Walmart lighting up the sky from our house and they're like really far away from us, so that's crazy. And I've also just always really liked to see like the stars at night and so having that blocked by Walmart, like five-ish miles away from my house is just like crazy to me. And so I was like, what can be done about this? And so I started going into like light pollution and stuff.
Good plan.
So I was, you know, I just want to thank you because I, you know, we just recently adopted a comprehensive plan and I'm looking back through it. We don't have anything about dark sky, but I feel like it's probably an oversight, given the feeling that I think the community shares with your values. And so while it's not in our comprehensive plan, it certainly seems aligned with it and my mind is just turning about how we can, you know, I think you've given us the first step, which is like with our climate action, it's a commitment. And a commitment to plan and a process. And so my mind is turning about how we can do that to engage the Environmental Commission because we are revising our development code, the sort of things that would control things like lighting levels through development. And now seems like a good time to, if we were to make that commitment, now would be a good time.
I think so. I think staff can look into it also, yeah.
Addison, do you have, first of all, a very nice job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Do you have an example of some dark sky legislation that was quite successful in communities similar to Oxford?
Um, I don't have any examples, but I'm, I mean, there are definitely some if you go onto like Dark Sky's website, they have a lot of examples, but I did not get any.
Thank you.
So I guess I would ask a question. If there were an opportunity for follow-up, for example, with our Environmental Commission, if this were to become a topic, might you be willing to come back and share this presentation again as part of a continuing conversation?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Addison. Good job.
She wants a picture with her Girl Scout leader.
That was like the truth, the truth was spoken.
Okay, now we will move to an update on the 2024 action items to achieve the comprehensive plan goals. Welcome, Jessica.
Hi.
Hard act to follow.
I know. She did a nice job. I'm not.
She did.
There we go. Okay. All right, good evening, councilors. I am happy to be presenting a topic that you know I care a lot about, which is tracking our goals that we say we're going to do each year. Way back in January of twenty-three, we had passed a new comp plan. And then we started talking about action items to achieve this comprehensive plan. And then in, over a period of refinement, in November of twenty-three, you passed a budget to advance these action items. And then we got to work starting in January of twenty-four. And so this is an update through, from January to July of twenty-twenty-four about how we're doing on these action items. And I, there we go. And, and so I have them in order by comprehensive plan goal. We have, almost all of them are aligned with the comprehensive plan. We did realize that sometimes there are things that we call essential services that are maybe not exactly defined in the comprehensive plan and we have those as well. I do have a paper copy for you, councilors up there, and then for the public, this will be included in the minutes. And so I'm going to go through these very quickly, but under the category of smart growth and quality places, our goal was to map our historic structures and really start to look at historic preservation. And we have hired a consultant with McKenna as part of the code rewrite that will focus on preservation guidelines. We're really excited about that. Develop an annexation policy. We have not yet started. To continue with the Oxford area trail system, we have applied for a grant for five hundred thousand dollars. We should hear in October about that possible award. And thanks to Sam Perry, we were awarded eight hundred thousand for the railroad crossing on that next phase of the trail. I want to go really fast, so stop me if you have a question. Okay. The next was to continue to explore that northwest segment of the Oxford area trail. And this is in process. We've asked Bayer Becker to kind of dust off those old plans. We're going to have a public meeting with Optab to review route recommendations and our goal is to bring that forward to council by the end of twenty-four. We're working on an interior alignment. So it says, conduct a feasibility study for connections between Oxford area trail and business districts. So we have another grant, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar planning grant in partnership with the Butler County Regional Transit Authority. And we're working with them to release an RFP to select a vendor. Still hope to do it this year, but it might be early twenty-five. We have not yet started the access management regulations. Under the submitting electric, excuse me, electronic submissions of traffic crash reports to the state. We started doing that on July one, using the Solve system for crash reporting. So this helps with data with the police department. Treat pedestrian and cyclist mobility with equal importance to vehicular mobility. We did plan a pedestrian safety blitz at College Corner Pike and we hope to have additional ones throughout the year. Improve business practices in parking office by creating an online process for customers to apply for permits. And so we're working with the passport program and we're hoping to do that in August. This was all written in July, so some of these may have already happened. Expand the Oxford area trail system by completing the perimeter loop into neighborhoods. You know, we did finish phase three, which connects out to the high school and phase four to the middle school is inches away from being fully complete. Expand the, oh, fix the black covered bridge. So we are, we have done structural engineering and evaluation and we're preparing bid documents and specifications for that. And so that'll be going on the rest of this year. Establish passenger rail service to and from Oxford. The project scope with ODOT is complete and we continue on preliminary engineering and we're working with the SDS owners to obtain an easement for this project. Another one with treating pedestrian and cyclist mobility with equal importance. We are looking at a sidewalk north of Spring by the substation in the missing areas north of Chestnut. And we are, we do have a construction estimate of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And we do have, I believe, a grant for this project through the safety program through ODOT.
Wow.
The curb gutter and sidewalk project, which we did work on. The long-term parking solutions. We are fixing the parking garage. It's in process.
It's a long-term process.
It sure is.
I had a question about that today.
But we're hoping to be done by December of twenty-four, but they're working on it all the time.
What's with that crank?
Conduct a feasibility study for a grave separated crossing over or under a railroad. And so we have the Ohio Rail, let me get this right, the Ohio Rail.
Development Corporation.
Thank you. The Ohio Rail Development Commission has notified the city that they will do the feasibility study and they will administer and pay a hundred percent of the study.
Yay.
So we're very excited about that.
I am very excited.
We are trying to complete an inventory to identify specific street segments that are candidates for resurfacing. And so analysis is scheduled for the first two weeks of August, following the completion of the street rehabilitation program. So we're kind of into that phase now. Now we're moving on to our housing goal. Leverage land and other tangible assets to address housing supply gaps. This is in process. We continue to work with Habitat on those development agreements, purchase agreements, subgrant agreements, all those things needed to advance this project forward, but those were passed at a recent meeting. Support developments and programs addressing supportive and transitional housing. Council had asked for us to get a quote from TOPPS or anyone, what it would take to operate a cold shelter. They have submitted that it would take twenty-five thousand dollars to run a cold shelter from November until March. And so they, this will serve an estimated ten individuals or small families. We're working with them to apply for the capital, community assist, excuse me, the community assistance program. Update the zoning regulations to increase density and promote diversity of residential housing types. So we have recently entered into a contract with McKenna Associates for a complete code rewrite. This is a really major project and housing is a major focus. Explore passing a moratorium on short-term rentals. You guys did that. And so we will be presenting, we've also presented language and so that is actively in the works. Develop an economic, develop a strategic plan. We have hired a vendor, hope to have it done by the end of this year. Explore job creation as a result of advanced air mobility programming and researches. We actively explored the All Futures Ohio Grant, but it requires a confirmed tenant in five years. Otherwise you have to pay, it's a loan and you have to pay all the money back. And we said, thanks, no thanks. And so we're actively exploring that, but until we're really, really ready to hit the ground running, we don't really want to apply. Promote the revolving loan fund to local businesses. We did do facade improvements and sustainability matching grants. We gave out nearly ten thousand dollars for new signs, new improvements for sustainability upgrades. So that was a pretty exciting program. Designate a small business advocate to provide technical assistance. This is in process. We are attempting Seth Kropenbaker. He's attempting to reach out to all new businesses and help them through the startup process. We, we examined formalizing this through a certificate of occupancy or verification program, but the next steps may occur in the future. But Seth is already doing a great job of reaching out to all new businesses, saying, how can I help you through the city's process? Create events and activities. We're looking this fall for an event next spring. Foster a culture of service and attracting new businesses. Oh, we're looking at some new online portals for submitting permits. We're looking at cross-training in our offices. That's in process. We did look at moving on to sustainability, an EV car share program. We found that it was twenty thousand five hundred dollars per car per year. And the startup costs were thirty-five hundred dollars per car. And then there was also a two thousand operational cost per car, per month. And we just kind of were like, maybe we'll hit the brakes on an EV car share right now. But that's the research that was conducted. An energy plan to meet Oxford's demand with renewable, renewables generated locally. We are working with a Power Clean Future Ohio to identify high-party solar facilities for onsite solar and then we can share that with council. Oh, something just happened to my Excel sheet. So I have a Plan B here. Sustainability. Okay, we're working with Power Clean Future Ohio to, oh, wait, talk about that. We're working with them to conduct an inventory of greenhouse gas inventories. We did get our first ever badges on our, great, what is it? The mayor's covenant, global covenant of climate energy. We're filing the passing realm with yay.
Yay.
So that's really exciting. Let's see. Explore sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council membership and if found viable, it says join by December. We might push that back to January after a conversation with their organization. Coordinate with community partners in climate action planning. The, this five-one-three green is a program out of Hamilton County. We've collaborated with a student project to kind of look at restaurants and retail stores and Oxford businesses and how do we help them promote some sustainable practices? Explore federal grants and incentives for climate action. And so we submitted a concept to OKI. OKI applied for the Climate Reduction Act, but wah-wah, we were not selected to proceed, but the effort was still put out there. Launch an educational program to inform residents and MU students about what can be recycled and composted. This was really well done this summer, if you hadn't seen like Waste Free Oxford campaign, and we're going to relaunch that into the fall as the students move back. We're looking with the, working with the Electrification Coalition to develop a process timeline. And this would be to adopt EV charging infrastructure. We have applied for a grant for that as well and we're just waiting to see if we're awarded. Let's see, I'm going to move on. Pursue a grant to feasibility study to solarize city facilities. Could not find a grant eligible for studies and planning. And so that's why we're using the, the Power Clean Future Ohio to help us with that assistance. Install solar generation and battery system at the Oxford Cemetery. This was completed. They did a couple of solar panels out there. Release a, now we're moving on to celebrations of the people and places that make Oxford unique. And this would be to encourage public art. We did a call for art. We're working with PACO right now and I'm moving that forward. And there is also through the HAPC, a lovely merril bean installed in the alley uptown. So that's exciting. Identify spaces where public art could be the showcase of Oxford local artists. And we are also working with Duke Energy on their new substation for an art location. Create new education, recreation and cultural opportunities for the community. And so we are working to fix the playground at Mary Day. Is construct a new dog park. The dog park RFP was released and we are, we just recently got new bids to do that. So that should be coming by end of this year. We hosted our first ever space race this past spring, so that was exciting. Develop a community center that offers programming. OPRD assisted the try and development of a site plan and rendering to aid in future fundraising and budget creation for a new facility. So we're still in partnership with those discussions. facility. So we're still in partnership with those discussions. See, moving on, we'll go down to include, improve or modify existing playgrounds. We are looking to replace the Uptown Water feature. It's very old and needs repaired all the time. And so we're working with, between community development and service on both a public restroom and new water fountains. You'll learn more about that in our capital improvement project budget that we have in a few weeks. Ensure year-round adequate childcare services. We have just finalized our revolving loan program for childcare startup. And so we're really excited to have that finalized. The CIC saw it the other day, so we're going to be promoting that out to the public in the very near future. Oh, this was the one where for community assistance, council has developed a new committee to accept applications and council review and make awards. So that group, that committee will be meeting in September and our community partners will be turning in their applications by the end of this week. So that'll be coming up really soon. Our tobacco retail program. So we have hired, even though we are in a lawsuit right now with the state about our tobacco retail license, we have proceeded with hiring a part-time code enforcement officer to help start doing some enforcement on underage sales. So we'll be beginning that in the very near future. Then moving on, fire EMS. It says, you know, we're really working with Miami University to advance our fire EMS, to address our deficit. So this will be a long-going project, but it says completed. I would say work is still going on, but we're going to get there. Let's see. Jumping down, it'll say partner with Joy Oxford, the Chamber, Miami University to bring in new and recurring events to the city. You know, we have partnered in the past with Ohio Chocolate Meltdown, the Great Ohio's Bicycle Adventure, Epic Soccer Cup, the Eclipse, the Mason's Car Show and Oxford Fest. All these kinds of things are going on. So I think we're really doing well with creative place making. Under here it says increase access for Oxford residents to the full containment services for mental health and substance abuse disorder. And the, we are working on the One Mind campaign by implementing the policy and training to ensure successful interaction between police and individuals with mental health. Kind of go through a couple of these, other really big ones. Just to move it along. Okay. Maximize, so moving into our utilities, we were looking at proceeding our wastewater treatment plant and our bio tower treatment. The project was not funded through the governor's bill program, but we are continuing to look for funding for those upgrades. Maximize existing usage of facilities for promoting infill and redevelopment. We are looking at the complete discoration system at the wastewater treatment plant. This project is 90% complete. Maximize utilities. We're looking at the phosphorus removal for the wastewater treatment plant. This work is 30% complete. And I think for the sake of time, I'm going to kind of move on, but as you can see, we are very busy working on the goals that council adopted earlier this year. And what I kind of just want to say in closing is that these are important guardrails and guidelines for us as staff to do what council finds important. And so I think whenever, you know, you want to share new ideas or things like that, those are great too. And what we'll do is we'll look at this and say, where have things shifted? What are priorities, priorities different? And we'll make sure that we can address that in a, you know, a really thoughtful way as we have these goals each year. So I know we're going to be having our budget session in the next few weeks for 2025, and that is a beautiful place to build in goals for the next year. So.
Thank you, Jessica. We really appreciate keeping our comprehensive plan in the forefront and organizing how we're achieving different goals. And so it's not just a forgotten.
Online on, Zachary Moore does a great job of making it very visually appealing where you can kind of see the progress button and it shows what are each of our goals are. So for people who want to dig deep, that will be made available in the near future.
Super. Thank you very much.
Well, enough I could just, it's, this represents, I'm super happy to hear this because it's not only the, the things we're trying to do, it's, as Mayor Snively says, it's how we're going about doing that. You know, that we do have a transparent, comprehensive plan with long-range goals broken down into annual goals and we're, we have annual reports, which we didn't used to have. We have this kind of mid-year reporting. And so it's really transparent what we're doing and not doing. And I think that's really progress in recent years. So thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. We really appreciate it. We'll move now to other public comments and anybody who wishes to address council on items that are not on the agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, this would be the time. And you can come up and give us your name and where you live and we'll give you five minutes. If you want to talk about something that's on the agenda, just wait till we get to it and we'll make that available then. Would anyone like to address council on other items? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution of council authorizing the, the acceptance of a donation from Steve and Susie Sadler in the amount of $20,000 to assist in funding a project at the Oxford Community Park.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Casey, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So in 2023, the Sadler family approached Parks Recreation. They had asked if there were any projects that we could use a donation towards. Of course, I said yes. Through some back and forth discussions, we eventually landed on the installation of a new shade canopy structure adjacent to the large playground at the Oxford Community Park. If you remember back in 2023, we did some renovations to that playground to make it more inclusive. But in those renovations, we kind of stole the existing shade structure to put some inclusive equipment underneath of that. So we kind of took that away from ourselves. In the meantime, we have purchased a new shade canopy. We used some CDBG funds to purchase that canopy, but it wasn't enough to both purchase and install the canopy. So the donor has agreed to use these funds for the installation of that canopy. We will use the same company that's installing the Merry Day Playground here in a few weeks. So while they're here in town, they'll also install this canopy. So I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors, have any comments or questions?
Lots. Terrific.
It is terrific.
You know, it is terrific. And I think it's just like, I think so many people give to the city of Oxford in so many different ways, but when people just volunteer, I appreciate that, I don't know Mr. Sadler, but Ms. Sadler's in the business of giving at Miami and that she's paying it forward, that they're paying it forward back to the community is just fantastic. And so.
Great.
Who knew it costs so much to install a canopy, but.
I, I should, while I'm up here, publicly thank both Steve and Susie for the donations.
Absolutely. We very much appreciate it. Thank you, Casey. All right. If there's no other discussion, it's all a great idea. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? No. All right. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to the second one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive the water and sanitary capacity benefit charges for the cottage community at 5234 Hester Road.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. City Manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. So community development professionals is planning to construct up to 12 cottage homes on Hester Road. This cottage community will provide affordable housing for low-income and homeless residents, and it will address the critical need of affordable housing for those residents. As Jessica mentioned earlier, we'll be bringing in other legislation dealing with this project. This one deals with the fees that we charge for water and sanitary sewer. I'm recommending to council that we waive the water and sanitary capacity benefit charges for this project since it'll provide a public benefit to the community. They will still be liable for the water meter, tap and inspection fees. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I recommend adoption of this legislation.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any questions, comments? We're glad to see this project moving forward. It certainly is a public project and for the public good. Anybody? Okay.
Doc, do you just have a rough estimate on what those, I mean, it's, we have so many contributions to this project. Do you have a rough idea of what those?
Well, I don't have a rough idea. I have the exact idea.
What is the in-kind contribution?
Well, the, for example, the water capacity benefit charge is $45,371.50. And then the wastewater capacity benefit charge is $45,372. So those two charges alone are over $90,000. The other charges are a lot less. For example, the four-inch water meter is $5,008. The water inspection is $50. And the wastewater inspection is 50. So this is the lion's share of the utility fees that we would be charging on this project.
And that's, those savings will be passed on as, Council of Raca notes, with this kind of developer, we know those savings will be passed on to the occupants. So that, that will reduce the cost of these units substantially. I mean, you develop that number by 12, it's a substantial subsidy.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted and we will move to the third.
A resolution extending the moratorium not to extend beyond September 30, 2024 on new short-term rentals within the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. How are you, Sam?
Evening. If you recall from the first reading of the text amendment, there was some discussion about, well, when will the ordinance that's later in the agenda go into effect? And will the moratorium cover that? And so that's what this is. So that it would, the moratorium would be extended just a few more weeks. Same moratorium that's been in effect since March. No other changes besides that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution?
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you. All right. So my name is Marcus Velasquez. I'm currently an incoming student at the Department of Nursing at Miami University. First off, just wanted to give respects as me, my father's worked within the rental business for a past few years. And, and so when looking at the staff notes, I did find that my conclusion while researching about the short-term rental costs for BMBs, I found that I found was a pretty similar conclusion in the fact that I believe that the best option when looking at the issue was to be able to have a temporary pause on the construction for new rental properties for three main reasons. One being the, being able to look back and make sure that we aren't, that current homeowners don't feel like we're infringing on their rights, but also just to be able to look into the amount of what we should look into for subsidized or unsubsidized land for rental property as well as any additional cost that we want for environment and temporary housing, one of them being mentioned, cold shelters. And just lastly, being able to look into and identify new possible opportunities within potentially having new housing options outside of just temporary housing available lay in the future. And about it, that's about it. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. And council, have any comments or questions?
I have a question. And this kind of pertains to the question we got from, concerns from some planning commission members. And I think Council Raghu asked the question, well, what about the mile square? Because we, you know, the consensus was, let's move forward with this. Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. But we also, I think there was some concern that the carve-out of the mile square could have consequences that we, you know, so the question was, like, should we figure out how, I know there's some non-conformity issues, but if we wanted to apply these same standards to the mile square so that that doesn't now become the place where new short-term rentals are concentrated, should we not do that now while we have a moratorium in place? And if we're going to do it, like, does it make sense to let the moratorium expire? And will we come back to that or not? I guess that's, if that's a part B on the conversation, what's the process for taking a look at? So again, maybe, maybe the consensus is with this, we're going to, we're going to protect neighborhoods from the development of these short-term rentals everywhere but the mile square. But if we're concerned about the mile square, how do we develop that policy? And how does the moratorium help us do that? Like, should we be extending the moratorium a little bit longer to develop that policy now? Or do we let the moratorium expire? We'll come back to the mile square later? I don't know whether you have a sense, Sam, of what, yeah, whether you have an answer to that question?
I was going to cover that a little bit with the text amendment, but yeah, I think we would need probably another five months or so to really spend time analyzing that. We couldn't do it in the two weeks between the readings. There's, there's probably 300 properties in the mile square that if the mile square was not carved out, would be new non-conformities because they already have rental permits, so they're allowed to do short-term rental use. So getting the hard numbers on that and looking at different scenarios, going back to Council Raghu's, Vice Mayor Raghu's questions, I think it's a good concept because there could be some portions, some subsets perhaps of the mile square where it wouldn't be as broad as just the zoning district. But kind of taking a more zoomed-in kind of sub-area planning of that is probably what that would take. Because we, we have, we know that many of those property owners have rental permits to do either one, but we don't know what the activity has been. As we discussed at the first reading, we know they exist. We don't necessarily, we haven't had conversations with them, nor do we know exactly where they are. So we would need to spend more time on that. I think it's a good concept. It's just not something that we could have accomplished within that last couple of weeks through things we just have going on before the school year starts up.
I understand. So I guess the question for me is just, does it make sense to extend the moratorium commensurate with that amount of time so that we can do that policy development since we have a moratorium in place now? Or are we willing to risk, you know, the risks of letting it expire and then with the intention of coming back to that within a few months? Maybe there won't be a rush to do anything, but part of the benefits of a moratorium allows you a little bit of time to develop your policies.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. I think among, you know, the seven of you, you can kind of test the waters to see, you know, if you think there's some portions of the mile square that maybe would need, could either roll back maybe to some other uses or be preserved. You know, we could analyze that and do some, you know, geography on that. That would take some more time, but we can definitely do it. And I think extending the moratorium would be, you know, a good opportunity for that rather than letting it expire, you know, at the end of September.
So how much time if you were?
So if you want to do that, you should make an amendment motion.
Okay. But you, you're saying that some, you know, what amount of time do you think would allow us to at least, I know you say that, at least understand the non-conformity issues and what some of the policy choices would be so we could come back to that? How much time?
I mean, I think a few more months. You know, six months would have been September 5.
Okay.
And I think just for round numbers, you know, another six months or less than that would be, you know, probably a lot less than that.
Okay.
We could always shorten it.
Okay.
It's easier to do that.
We can extend it or shorten it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Further discussion. Anybody?
So I guess, you know, I would make a motion. I think since we have a moratorium in place and I feel like the mile square is still a little bit of an open question on the policy development, like that, that I think it would be worth extending the moratorium a bit longer, at least to answer the question whether we want to apply this policy in the mile square or not. I just don't think we've fully explored what, the pros and cons and all this stuff that Sam's talking about. I don't know what a good number is. I might say and extend it by three months. And if we need to extend it longer, we could. So I guess I would make a motion that what's our, the date is now.
You probably want to go to January 30.
Yeah. So.
Is that going to be your motion?
Yeah, I, we could talk about the amount of months. I might.
I just need a motion.
Okay. Well, I need to make a motion to extend it. I need to pick an amount of months and, you know, if it's, I mean, I guess I would say December 31 and just by the end of the year.
All right. Is there a second to Dave's motion?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the advisability of extending the moratorium for, until the end of the year.
I don't want to extend it too long unnecessarily, but the rental dynamics within the mile square are really tricky and I would love to get some progress there if we can. So I think this is reasonable, not a time to think about that and have staff look into
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that Mr. Perry said, Sam, that it would be helpful to just extend it rather than to let it lapse and try to bring it back in. That was the sense. I have a question for our law director. I remember when this moratorium was first presented, we had some members of the community, if I recall, come and talk about the possibility of it being unconstitutional, infringement on property rights. And I had asked you if it was indeed the case, and you said no. But that, you know, beyond a certain time, perhaps people could feel that way or we might be encroaching on some infringement in some way. Do you have anything to share about that?
This wouldn't be the issue here. The concern is that for an extended period of time, usually it's a year or more, and it becomes an excuse not to revisit the issue. Clearly, this council is revisiting the issue. There's a policy. There's rationale behind the discussions and an extension of, frankly, in this instance, ninety days or one hundred and twenty days. And even if it were extended beyond that, once you got the other data, information would all be reasonable. I have no concerns over that.
Thank you.
Sam, do you think that staff is gonna have the ability to do this kind of a work in the next ninety days with everything else you got going on?
We just got a bunch more work today we weren't expecting from a software conversion. But, so I really don't know. You know, we were hoping to have this wrapped up. But, so there's that implication. Then there's also the, there are some property owners who are kind of waiting for this to end because they want to, you know, go through with their transaction or whatever the case may be. They kind of want to get, what is the final decision, if you will, you know, of council? So obviously you have the other agenda item that will kind of explain that a little bit too, but.
Sam, I wonder, and I'm not trying to make this, muddle this, but I wonder if it makes some sense to go ahead and pass this and then put a moratorium on for the mile square. Because that might address this concern about having it extended too long. I mean, we have a recommendation.
So all, that we could extend it on all zoning districts not covered in the ordinance that's about to come forward?
Yeah.
I mean, we specifically carved out those.
It's, it's not actually the geographic mile square, but the zoning districts kind of go in and out a little bit.
Oh, that's right.
But yeah, that's actually a good, it's a good, that's a good kind of middle ground there. But for the folks that are kind of looking at transactions that are maybe on the periphery, there's probably some that are not. But, but I just want you to be aware, there are some people that have been asking.
I've heard some of them, yes.
So people that are trying to convert rentals to short-term rentals in the mile square are asking.
Or outside.
Outside.
Okay, congratulations.
Sometimes they don't say where the location is, but they're considering an acquisition. And they just want to know when the moratorium is gonna end. And we have been telling them beginning of September up until this point, so.
So the question is, how much limbo do you want to put people in and for how long?
So I'm trying to look up real quick in the ordinance, like, if I were to amend the motion that the moratorium be extended just for the, does it, does it say the ones which that does not apply? Or is it just saying which ones it applies to and then it's not?
It starts on page twenty-four, if it helps you.
So, so it applies to all districts except?
Right.
R one A, R one B, R two A, and R three.
Well, I think it's now become too complex, in my opinion. Because you're talking about what's in the mile square and what's out of the mile square and trying to free things up for the part that's outside the mile square. I think that the idea of just going ahead with this unamended, and then if, when we get to that point on the agenda where we talk about it, if you want to propose a moratorium for the mile square, then that would be a separate thing. And I think that's the way to do it.
It doesn't sound simpler to me. I mean, I think we have a moratorium in place we could extend.
Well, then go ahead and make it, make your motion.
So I mean, well, so I mean, if someone consider a friendly amendment to my motion that the moratorium be extended for all zoning districts except R one A, R one B, R two A, and R three, which is basically the moratorium would be lifted on those districts because we have policy for them now.
But we want to extend that moratorium until September thirtieth on those districts.
Okay.
I think we should separate those amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm lost already.
No, yeah, okay. No, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Would you like to withdraw your amendment at this time? Or do you want us to vote on it?
The original amendment.
The original amendment.
Or we could just propose and just have separate dates. That the moratorium on all those districts be extended until September thirtieth and all districts except R one A, R one B, R two A, and R three be extended.
It's your choice as the mover. You can do it either way. And I just want you to do it one way or the other.
I would say I think you'll, you might not get the same amount of support if you group them together in any way. I would at least start with your first amendment.
Okay.
My, my suggestion.
So I'm lost the thread of the logic. So, yeah, I mean, it's either, but we're, it's two separate motions on this same moratorium as opposed to a new moratorium. Is that what you're saying?
Or, or I guess you could withdraw it and then we would have a separate moratorium whenever we talked about the next.
Yes.
But then we would have, we'd put it on the agenda and it's a separate moratorium.
For the following meeting, which would give us plenty of time.
I think one of my concerns.
Because we're extend, we're extending the moratorium to September thirtieth.
Yeah.
That gives us time.
Yeah, okay.
In a future meeting to bring up a moratorium if you want, and we can discuss and vote on it at that time. That would be my suggestion.
Well, then my other concern was that if we extend it to December, but staff doesn't actually have time to work on it because they have so many other projects on their plate, then we're looking at yet another extension. And then we start getting into public trust and those issues as well.
But I, I mean, I would say that I think that was, I think, when we talked about doing this, I think it was, it was a staff decision to carve out the mile square. And I think it's a debatable question. But we and the planning commission were like, no, let's just move this far. Let's not, let the perfect be the enemy of the good. If we intend to come back to the idea of the mile square, like, again, the question is when and how to handle it. So I'm happy to withdraw my motion and so.
Okay, we're back to the main motion then, which is a resolution to extend the moratorium to September thirtieth. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Is everybody ready for this vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move to ordinances, first reading. Start with the first one. Oh, we don't have any first readings. Second reading, thank you.
An ordinance amending section nine thirty-one twelve of the Oxford Codified Ordinances, chapter nine thirty-one twelve, entitled Garbage, Refuse, and Recycling Service.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike, welcome.
Good evening. No changes from first reading.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? If you were here at the last time, we had more conversation on these on first reading. But nevertheless, if you have questions, you're certainly entitled to ask. Thank you very much. Counsel, have any comments or questions on this one? All those, oh, we gotta do a roll call.
Mr. Pretherton?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Nably?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted. We'll move to number two.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit application to allow a dog training facility as a conditional use for the purpose of allowing Training Tracks K-9 Learning Center to operate in the existing building at fifty-five hundred College Corner Pike, Oxford, Ohio, four-five oh five six, with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
No changes.
Okay. Thank you for that detailed report. Appreciate it. So this is for bring a Training Tracks K-9 Learning Center from, currently in College Corner. And they would be bringing a facility here in Oxford where they have a lot of customers, including myself. But it is not a conflict of interest. All right. Is there any further discussion on this one? Nobody wants to discuss it. Please call the roll.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretherton?
Yes.
Ms. Nably?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted and we'll move to number three.
An ordinance approving a preliminary and final planned development application and preliminary subdivision, South Farm, Section Four, twenty-five new single-family lots submitted by J.A. Development, six-point-eight-one acres, Robert's Drive, Oxford, Ohio, four-five oh five six.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this one?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
No changes.
Okay. No changes. We appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this subdivision ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counsel, any further discussion?
So just the pet, the teacher in me wants to just say that sometimes really long processes end in kind of what seem like a foregone conclusion. But, you know, but there's a ton of discussion that leads up to them. And maybe that's the sign of a good process is at the end, it's a, it's a foregone conclusion. But yeah, that a subdivision process like that we're about to approve without much conversation, went through much staff review, went in front of the planning commission, we had a first reading. And so what seems like a rubber stamp has, has been very thoroughly through our process, so.
It has indeed.
A more contentious issue would have continuing debate today, not just last time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretherton?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Nably?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted. Move to number four.
An ordinance revising Oxford Zoning Code, Section eleven forty-one oh one, accessory regulations for the purpose of adding a primary residence requirement for short-term rental usage within R one A, R one B, R two A, and R three zoning districts.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dave, seconded by Chantel. Any changes?
We don't have any changes on this one either. There were some questions that came up as we discussed earlier. So we did, there were some questions about, I think, the transferring of rental licenses from one property owner to another, which I think we answered that. And I know there was a question about, well, could that potentially be ceased and transferred? Looked into that a little bit further and it cannot. So if there's a legitimate and active and in good standing rental permit, it can be transferred to a new owner. The new owner would have to apply for that, get it in their name, get it inspected. It's part of the transition, but it cannot be ceased and ownership change. It's a, it's a very typical land use right that can pass from one owner to another. The way we started the program initially was to have a one rental permit application for long and short term. So all of those property owners have had the right, even if they have not activated it, to, to, to do that use. So that's the answer to those questions that came up. And then obviously we talked about the mile square topic a little bit already, so.
So Sam, that's the only threshold? If they apply for or already had a rental permit during this, they basically have a?
They would be able to, to retain that. If it, if it, for whatever reason, did not continue to be in good standing because it was not renewed for a one-year period or is in some way changed to a different type of use in some way, then that would cease that right.
So if they went to a full-time rental, for example, for a year?
That's, that's debatable because there's not really a mechanism to track that right now. We could potentially institute that. Or if it was converted to something else, an owner occupied dwelling and they were not renewing the rental permit, we have a tracking mechanism for that.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? So for those who are here just wondering what the heck is going on. So this is for short-term rentals like Airbnb. And for outside the mile square, this is saying, hey, that needs to be owner occupied. So you're renting out some of your rooms rather than just taking away houses out of the housing market and out of the housing stock for people to buy. So that's what that's about. Any discussion by counsel?
This, again, is something for which there's a ton of conversation. We go back five or something years talking about this. And so this is kind of revisiting after our first attempt to clarify things. And I think this is a great step forward. And, and I don't want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I, I do, and I think some of us share a concern that, that protecting all areas but the mile square, it will probably have the result of concentrating some of those activities in the mile square and adding to already high, you know, investment property pressures on affordability. So it's my concern. So I guess the question is, and I just would pose it to the rest of council, whether it's an additional moratorium and/or whether it's, and I'm not sure what it would take to say to staff like, hey, we'd really like to not carve out the mile square. And what, what would it take to do that? What are the issues? I have that concern, but that's just me. So I would kind of invite someone else. If they want to say, hey, I don't want this to be the end of this because I want to take a look at the mile square, I'll, I'll let it to you to express that concern. Because it does involve staff looking at, to what, what would that take? All these non-conformities. Do we need to extend the moratorium in the mile square? Or do we say, at this point, this is done and we'll put a pin in it and move on? I'm happy to get to this point. But if, if other people share my concern that maybe the mile square deserves some of these same protections, then they'll have to express that themselves.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else?
I could speak a little of that, yeah. I, I don't want them to be carved out in any way, but I think there are distinctions, potentially categorically, or at least close to it, given the difference in numbers, in the rental dynamics, being that most of them are student-rented, so they're not homeowner occupied at all. But then there are gaps in that in which rentals can occur, like over the summer and all sorts of other complexities. And the burden on staff resolving all that is crazy. So I feel like it has to be partitioned out till we find a solution that works. And I think that's what we're working through.
I think you've identified a lot of what happens in the mile square, which is different than what happens elsewhere, is that they are student rentals during the year. And then during the summer, they might open them up for some short-term rental.
Among all sorts of other things, like winter break and things like that.
But that's not taking housing out of the stream for people who want to buy housing.
Probably not. And in some ways, those dynamics can even be beneficial, but it's really hard to figure out, which is why I think we need a little time.
I have a question, a comment. My assumption, just based on living there, is that there are not very many Airbnb or short-term rentals within the mile square. Either they're student occupied and then during J-term, summer, they're just empty. They're just completely empty. It would be really hard for them to turn over into a short-term rental because you would need to have furniture or that, all that stuff. And then on top of it, the housing stock is not very well taken care of. So it would have to take an investor coming in and flipping those homes to intentionally make it a short-term rental. So that's just my, my assumption based on walking around. And then I think Sam had said, so this is more looking forward of the next five years, ten years, not making sure that we are doing our due diligence to not allow the mile square to be hurt even more than it already is as far as losing the single-family homes or just families that live there. So I think Sam had said that they, we would need to make a bigger distinction in our rental permits to carve out short-term rental, right? That's the biggest hurdle, correct? So it doesn't seem, like, that seems like very doable, right? Because other cities have done it. So we, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of too bad we lumped them all in together because that, now we have the three hundred people, three hundred permits that could be, you know, already are in, because they were all lumped in together. So everyone with a rental permit basically is.
So would you like to call for, for staff to work up a moratorium for the mile square? Or would you like to let it go and, as Dave said, put a pin in it?
I was gonna second Dave's, but.
Well, it's not a motion so much as a request to staff to bring forward a, because we've got time. We've got until the end of September.
Yeah. I mean, we'd call for a new resolution and I think just a sense that someone's calling for, someone has to call for one.
Right.
And second it.
And we could vote on it.
But also I think it's a two-parter, which is if we think it's a problem enough that we want to look at the code itself, that takes time and energy and planning commission time. And if we think it's worth it, then we do it. If we don't think it's worth it, then we don't need a moratorium. And, and it's not just put a pin in it. It's like, we probably won't come back to it for a while, if ever. So that's just the question, whether other people share that.
Yeah, I, there's nothing special about the mile square that it wouldn't also fall victim to what happens to a neighborhood whenever there's an abundance of short-term rentals, instead of having permanent residents, including students, right? So that is definitely a much, that's an advantage compared to a short-term rental. So I would also agree with you that we should protect the mile square like we would the rest of the housing stock.
Well, and the difficulty too, I mean, it used to be that if it was owner-occupied, it would get sold for student rental. That market is changing. I see a lot of signs for rent this, this year. But we do have like one apartment complex off South Locust that hasn't been going out for student rental, and I believe they've been doing short-term rentals. So it's, it's, it's kind of complicated. It might be best to maybe identify where the owner-occupied homes are and saying that they can't be converted to short-term rental. I don't know if that...
I, I guess I would say, okay, so if the projections are right and the student population might, the enrollment might go down, we're going to have these homes that are going to be opening up in the mile square that are no longer student-occupied.
Yeah.
We want families in those homes. We already know that there are so many families that do not have access to a home. We need to make sure that the easy conversion is not put some cheap furniture in there and a slap of paint, and then now it's a short-term rental. The market forces probably wouldn't be there, right, because there's going to be fewer students? But we, I don't want to leave that up to chance. We need to protect the housing stock that we have, including in the mile square. And if they are not filling it with students, even more opportunity to protect them and make sure families are in them.
Yeah. So I think I hear, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing a request that, I know, one of our next meetings then in September, that we have a new moratorium to meet that issue that you've just described, in the mile square. Does that make sense to you, Sam?
It does.
Okay.
But I think we all recognize that it's, it's complex.
It is complex.
And, you know.
All right.
So I think a stepwise motion is good. We'll do this, and let's finish this.
All right. So all those in favor of this ordinance can answer the roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretherton?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to number five when you're ready.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 3758, limiting the number of non-medical cannabis dispensary licenses to two in the city of Oxford, and designating the locations for these two non-medical cannabis dispensaries at the current existing locations for the two medical cannabis dispensaries.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and that's Doug.
Yeah, so this replacement ordinance, it replaces an earlier ordinance, 3758, that dealt with non-medical cannabis dispensaries. And this will permit the relocation of Pure Iconic from 5280 to 5640 College Corner Pike. It will not change the number of allowed non-medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Oxford, which will remain at two. So if they choose not to move, they can stay there. If they choose to move, they lose their ability to have one at this earlier location.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors?
I'm really proud of us as a city. I mean, regardless, I am by no means a pothead at all. My friends will tell you that. And I, but I am really proud that we have not stood in the way of how the people voted. If I look at a lot of other places that are getting in that way whenever there was such a mandate, it really is disappointing. So I am just proud that we are, we're responding to what the people want.
It's legal, like alcohol.
It's legal.
So my, my question is, is that at one point in time, can we have an administrative procedure that doesn't involve an ordinance to change the address of a permit holder? You know, like it's a, we just have a few of these, but I think at some point in time we'll, we may have more than two, and, and it may not require council action every time someone moves the dispensary location.
Well, it will require ordinance if we can do more than two.
Yeah, because the original ordinance said we'll only have two.
Well, I know, we have two, and we have the addresses for each one. But I think in, over the long term, it just, it's, it's a, it's got a heavy-handed way to handle what's effectively a permitting process for businesses. So right now, we only have two, but it's fine.
Okay. Ready? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Pretherton?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted. We'll move to number six.
An ordinance by Oxford City Council authorizing the city manager to take all action necessary, including but not limited to the negotiation and execution of purchase and sale agreement for the sale of certain real property located in the city of Oxford, Ohio to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and Jessica?
No changes since the first reading. Thank you.
Okay. So for those of you who are wondering what this is about, I'll give a quick summary. So Habitat for Humanity is going to build some low-income housing that people can afford. And what we're going to do is sell them the property for a buck. If they decide to not do it, or they want to sell it later, they got to sell it back to us for a buck. So that's what this is about. All right, any questions or comments?
We were able to do so only thanks to the, to Congress and the President and the American Recovery Act, you know? That's how we were able to acquire a piece of property that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars and give it away. So it was an awesome opportunity. So I want to say thank you, my federal government, who did something right for once.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? You ready to go?
Officially, woo-hoo. This is awesome.
Woo-hoo.
Every, every step we take forward on this, and other stuff like the cottage community, I'm super excited about.
We're making some real progress here, and I appreciate that. Please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretherton?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted. So what you've seen today is real progress toward getting affordable housing and taking care of people who are at the bottom rungs and trying to just get a foothold into, into housing. So I, I think that's one of our major goals, and, and it's good to see that happen. We'll move now to announcements and communications, and I'll start with the city manager.
Thank you. First off, our proposed fire EMS levy, it will appear on the November 5th general election ballot as issue two. The Board of Elections signed that, that number last week. And so we'll be gearing up to provide information to the public about the need for this levy. We met tonight with a volunteer, Dan Cox, who has volunteered to be the treasurer for our issue pack that we need to form in order to receive monies and spend monies. And so we're preparing other information for this issue. The mayor, fire chief, and I will be presenting information to the three service organizations, Lyons, Quanus, and Rotary, and propose to meet with other organizations as well. So we're gearing up for that very important issue. Also, I did, the finance director did provide our proposed capital improvement program for 2025 to 2029, our five-year proposed capital improvement plan. And we're going to review that with counsel at a work session on Monday, September 9th, at 6:30 PM here. And the last thing that I wanted to share with city council is our deer management program. And we're going to make a, a change this year that, that I hope might result in additional deer being taken. We're going to basically divide the hunting season into three assigned hunting periods, which is similar to Miami University's program. So that may increase the total number of deer taken in the city. I've also asked the police chief to explore the cost of a police deer calling program utilizing Butler County Regional SWAT team members. It would be separate from our deer management program and require a special nuisance permit from Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Deer would be taken by rifle with a muzzle and a sight instead of bow and arrow. So we're looking into that, and I'll provide counsel with information, basically the estimated cost of this program. Our current program, there's no cost to the city except for David Treelevin's time. But we've had some people that felt that we should be doing more. I will tell you that they did increase the bag limit in our county. It was two last year, and it's three now. So that's good news. And of course, the Ohio Whitetail Deer Opening Hunting Date with bow and arrow in our region is from Saturday, September 28th, to Sunday, February 2nd, 2025. So it's, it, it'll be upon us soon. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Mike?
Nothing, Doug. Thank you.
TJ?
Just thought, I think you all know, but that we're in full-fledged U-Haul season right now.
Yes, we are.
Just a lot of traffic issues, a lot of parking challenges. So I just want to remind people to, to have patience and, you know, over the next few days. As we're kind of flooded with college students, many who are living on their own for the first time. I know our police officers, a shout out to them, and our public safety assistants and dispatchers who are about to be inundated much busier with responded complaints, calls for service, and proactive enforcement. So again, just asking for the public's understanding and patience. If they see a problem, you know, call us. Take simple safety precautions and simple crime prevention steps, like locking your car, locking your apartment door.
Please.
Things like that to, to prevent some of the problems we typically see. But just acknowledging the fact that staff in the police department, as well as fire and EMS, are about to be taxed.
Yep, thank you very much. Very important that people realize if you're on your own for the first time, you really need to lock your doors. I can't, I don't know how many reports there are, but it is a pretty regular thing that somebody breaks into a car that was not locked, and people took their laptop, and they're... Don't leave valuables in your car and lock it up. This is not rocket science. My sermon is over. All right. Heidi? Okay. Chief?
Hi, I'm Jay Jay.
Okay, good answer. Casey?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
A few announcements. This is often the time of year where we get the question almost every day, why is the pool not open? Sometimes that question comes from my fellow apartment heads. So this is the time of year where our students go back to school. So, so, you know, they, they're back in, high school, college kids, they go back. If they're a college kid, they usually go back to wherever they're going to college, because it's not always here. High school's in session all day. We have fifty, about 55 to 60 seasonal staff between the aquatic center and the concession stand and the camp. And 98% of those are probably high school and college kids. So they're, that's why we're not open during the week. But we are still open weekends through Labor Day, and we will have our annual doggy dip event again on Labor Day. So all that's coming up. Speaking of dogs, Jessica had mentioned this, but we did receive our bids for the new dog park project on Friday. I'll review all those this week. I've, I've been off work yesterday and today, except for now. And so we'll go through those this week. We'll make a decision. I'll work with the service department on getting some water access and some parking lot renovations down to that new location. But you should see some progress here very soon this fall in a new dog park. And then, as mentioned, the Mary Day Park playground that's being replaced is probably just a few more weeks out from that equipment showing up and starting that project. So a lot will be happening this fall.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Sam?
I just wanted to say I enjoyed watching the Olympics a couple of weeks ago. I think it was a lot of fun for everybody to see. No personal connection or connection to Oxford, other than just no one else said anything about it.
Thank you, Sam. Jessica?
Just a few things. One, I'd like to say welcome back Miami students. I mean, you're very important to our community, and we're glad to have you back. Second, I want to say thank you to our street department. The roads look lovely, and I know that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into getting that done, especially before move-in. So thank you for your hustle behind the scenes to do that. And I, personally, I want to say thank you to you for being an open council to allow youth to come and present their ideas. So that's really nice. Not, not all communities would be so open. So thank you. And then finally, I would invite everyone to our annual Streets and Eats event on Friday, August 30th. This is in partnership with Miami Activities and Programming in the city of Oxford. It is a giant welcome-back event. The police, I hope, will have their cars out. There's basketball courts out. I believe there's zip lines and rides, and it's a lot of fun. So please come uptown and enjoy our community for what it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I decided I would.
Okay.
So bear with me. So today, the, the city settled a lawsuit involving some rental housing and the use of that house, and was it appropriate bedroom and was not. Two weeks ago, I met with the fire chief at a residence, or at a, at a larger former fraternity house. And in that case, there were some undercurrents and potential threats of litigation. We met with the property owners and their representatives. We worked out resolutions. And the message that I want to provide is, is that the city takes the responsibility very seriously of making sure that it, that these rental units where these students and families lives, live are safe. As we hear what council members say, the code is the code. But we will work with you. This is not an adversarial process, and it's not intended to be an adversarial process. It's intended to be a collaborative process. Staff is here. You bring in your application, you ask the questions. They will work with you. And if people come in and understand it's a good faith process, I think sometimes a lot of these problems can be solved on the front end before they escalate to something that on the back end costs the city money because we've got to get involved in situations that require the law and director's office to get involved. And frankly, it, it becomes a burden on staff time as well. So I want to give Sam and his staff recognition for working with these property owners to get things resolved, and on a personal level, I'm very happy, because I don't like going to court.
Thank you, Chris. Mike?
Just a reminder that applications for the city's Public Assistance Program are due this Friday at 5:00 PM. I'd also like to remind everybody that the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing Group, OSH, has a meeting on Monday at 5 o'clock at the Presbyterian Seminary, for anybody who's interested. And I think that's all I've got today.
Okay, thank you. Alex?
Sure. So first of all, there are two more Uptown Summer Concert Series Thursday nights. This Thursday is the Butler Philharmonic Orchestra. And then on the 29th, the day before Streets and Eats, is the Queen City Silver Star. So definitely be sure to check those out. And if you feel like volunteering, you get to watch the band for free and help out a local nonprofit. You can help our tourism board set up and tear down tents. But most of the time in between, you're just watching the concert. So great opportunity if you're interested in volunteering. And then I'm probably going to say this a few more times before the end of summer, but a lot of work goes into keeping Oxford's economy lively in the summer, and people have been working really incredibly hard behind the scenes. And you may say, ah, the students are back. Great. We don't have to try so hard. But that's actually very much not true. We have Streets and Eats, and then that kicks off into September when we have Oxtoberfest, which will be September 21st. We have Hike-A-Thon, which is also September 21st. So we've got a lot going on. So for students who are coming back, for residents who live here, just if you see somebody working really hard uptown, just take a second and say thank you. And welcome to new coming, new incoming Miami students. I went to Miami, so I can totally vibe with the move-in feelings. It's, you know, very nostalgic, so I'm super excited for you to start your journey at Miami. We in Oxford are happy to have you and see you be stewards of our community for the next however many years you're here. And speaking of bringing students, a thank you to Ann Weitzel with the Menard Center for Democracy for bringing students to council, bringing council to students. I know I can speak for Amber David, and I have had the opportunity to work with not only incoming Miami students, sorry I missed you all yesterday, but with high school students as well. And it's one of my favorite things that I get to do. So just a massive thank you for including us. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, just an update and a question that you may or may not be able to answer right away. So the tenants' rights legislation, hopefully that should be in your inbox in the next week. And that is just compiling together best practices from around the state and trying to kind of button up those questions as far as civil tickets and that kind of thing. And then the other question about our solar array on the closed landfill, I'm going to read from my notes, because I don't understand what these terms mean. But my friend who is helping me on it, her, what her thoughts were, she said, one, we have a key connection, right? have a Q connection, right? I'm assuming.
We have what?
A Q connection.
They have a point of interconnection to the distribution.
And that's with Clean Capital, right? Not with us?
No, they have to get that with Duke Energy. They're tapping into the Duke Energy grid, distribution grid.
And then the other notes say, if Duke would allow, can we have behind-the-meter transaction or ver, and/or virtual PPAs question? And then also, could we, something for the city use? Those are my notes. It was a quick phone call.
Okay.
I heard a lot of that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
She's been researching these same items, so we can leave.
And she, she also said that the city of Bexley would be a really good place to look for some of these answers.
So we'll, we'll get an email out.
Yeah, we have more information. I mean, I, I sent an email, which talked about the point of interconnection. And, and of course, Duke Energy wants to protect their grid. And they basically are wanting from Clean Capital, $2.4 million for a 5-megawatt system and $1.1 million for a 2.75-megawatt system and $243,000 for a 1.75-megawatt system. And of course, I think I shared with you some time ago that that's why they went with the lower solar farm because of these costs. And, and I've looked at those reports. It includes upgrading their lightning arrestors at two substations and, you know, I'm not, I'm not an electrical engineer, but it seems like that is maybe asking a bit too much. But I understand they are wanting to protect their system for reliability. But I also feel that in Ohio, we're not at the state level encouraging renewable energy. You know, if you look at, at what they're requiring of the electric distribution utilities, there is, I think, 2.5% renewable energy this year, but, but no solar energy requirement. And, and of course, Duke Energy is, is putting in their own solar facility. So it's been a difficult project and it's, it's been disappointing. I did get a price from, from Clean Capital if we were to purchase their power and it was 14 cents per kilowatt hour. And we're presently paying 7.17 cents per kilowatt hour in our electric aggregation program. So, you know, if we were to buy that, we would be doubling our electric aggregation price. So we're still working on some other ideas. They're wanting to ask for an extension of the option to lease. And I told them initially that I didn't favor that. You know, you've had plenty of time. But they would like to see if the virtual net metering program for community solar projects gets adopted. It's a bill. I forget the number of the bill. But, you know, whether or not the legislature with just, what, three months left in this legislative season passes that bill, I don't know. So, you know, it's, I must say it's been disappointing because, you know, I, I'm still hopeful we're able to work it out. Maybe we can purchase some of their power for our local needs. But I certainly don't want to go with that price for our electric aggregation program. But, you know, we, we'll discuss that staff-wise and, you know, and even if we switched horses and streamed, they would face the same prices from Duke Energy. And, you know, so, so more to come.
Do we know how much BQ or now Clean Capital has invested in the project?
No, I do not, you know.
Because there's no infrastructure setup.
They have not. They've done a lot of engineering and design. They, you know, they got their, I forget the number of the permit they got from the state. Yeah. 513 permit from EPA. And so they've invested a lot of money in this design phase. And they want to see this project come to fruition because that's what they do. They're also having difficulty with their proposed facility in Columbus, which is much bigger than ours. And in Columbus, the city owns the distribution utility. So, you know, they're facing some, some different hurdles there, I guess, so.
Jason, did you want to address this?
So I sort of have a question. It seems crazy that since we had the infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act specifically worked to have infrastructure that addresses electric capacity and connective capacity, that those upgrades that seem necessary aren't potentially funded through one of those acts?
Yeah.
Is that because it's going through the state first and the states?
You know, it's a good question. I know that they've got their staff, Clean Capital, exploring those and, but I think they were banking on this community solar bill passing. And basically what it amounts to is virtual net metering where someone could be in an apartment and not be able to put a solar panel array on their roof because they don't own the building, but they could purchase power from this, you know, community solar project and get a discount on their electric bill. Other states have adopted it, but, but Ohio hasn't. And, you know, the utilities are not in favor of it because they feel that they're losing out on their stranded cost. And, you know, so it's, it's, we have work ahead of us.
Yep. Thank you. Would you have more? Okay. Amber?
I want to thank the students for coming here and I really enjoyed meeting with you yesterday. We have a call for haiku in Oxford. This is our second call. The first one was haiku in bloom, which was a spring-summer call. Now this one is called Harvest Haiku. So if you go to the city website, the Public Arts Commission, there's a call on there. You can submit up to two haiku, which are Japanese poems. And the winning haiku will be mounted on the windows of businesses in town on large window clings. And what I was so excited to hear was that other businesses wanted to get in on the funds. So they actually contacted the city and said, can we have a window cling in our window? They didn't have one last year. So you still have time to submit that. And I saw the sad faces when we were talking about the deer. And, and I love the deer too. I love them in our backyard. My husband and I went for a walk on Hilltop last week and it's this, it's this beautiful neighborhood with a big loop. And we counted 16 deer in this neighborhood on our walk within like probably 25 minutes or so.
Just come to my backyard.
And, you know, we do have concerns about having too many deer and it, it becomes an issue for public safety with drivers and also ticks. So we do have to try and control the deer population, but there will still be plenty to enjoy.
However, the deer are really acclimated to Oxford because unlike students, they stop at the street and look both ways. It's a joke. But they do do that.
They do.
It's pretty bizarre.
It's true.
Jason?
Nothing for me. I'm going to, I'm going to hold on.
Okay.
So I'll start in no particular order. Since we're talking about deer, you know, I, I don't know what we need to document to document that we have nuisance conditions. From, I can see what the permit process is like for individuals, but I think we need to start documenting and fixing some, you know, what are some of the costs or deer population? I know the chief has, has car accidents per year. My backyard smells like manure because there are just so many deer. They're just hitting everything so hard. And so I think the, if we start to total up the costs of it, it's pretty high. And so I, I'm, I'm really, I super appreciate that we're going to try a different voluntary program, but I, I think we have to start laying the groundwork for something more rigorous if we want to protect our public and our, our gardens and costs and everything. So that was one. Again, a, a thanks on the, the capital improvements. It was paving Palooza, the trail, the streets. It was incredible. And to see all this new asphalt around town and, and on the streets and in particular our trail, it's just really amazing to see that kind of stuff done. I would say also that, you know, summer's really fun in Oxford because there's so much maintenance that happens. I mean, there were so many people painted their structures uptown this year. That's a really big investment. And so everybody's working really hard to make the town look nice over the summertime so that when you guys arrive, it looks ready for you. Speaking of you guys, again, you know, want to thank you again. These are Miami students who are, came to school early. You know, they could be at home by the pool instead of at city council at 9:00 PM on a Tuesday night. They decided to come and I think it's just a testament to, you know, when you have a town full of 18,000 or 17,000 college students, some of the behaviors create burdens for the community. We have to be honest about that. But, but students add a ton of value and, and make the town what it is and, and often leave the town better than they found it. So thank you for spending your time with us here tonight. Last thought is, when we think about this idea of interconnection and should we do the power? Yeah, we pay 7 cents per kilowatt hour, but there's a social cost to carbon of buying dirty energy, you know? And I don't say that we're doing that, but I think that we may need to think of that. We may need to pay a little bit more for electricity if it means stimulating developers to, to develop locally. But I appreciate, right now, we're in a place where we're just trying to find a way to bust through the log jams that are so frustrating to do in the right thing. But, so thanks to everybody for trying to figure a way through this. So thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Several things in no particular order. One is the city manager mentioned issue two. So that if anyone has an organization or a group that would like to hear more information about issue two, this is to provide fire and EMS service. And if we don't pass it, we're in a crisis that I don't know how we get out of. So that's, that's the bottom line on that. COVID is rearing its ugly head again in this, in Ohio and in this area. So just encourage you to be careful, be smart. And if you feel something coming on, test yourself and then stay away from people for a while until it's gone. So we don't, I, please, let's not go back to where we were before and get the shots when they come out. The OSH Trail is coming right along and we live by the section that they're working on right now and it really looks cool. And we rode our bikes on it and went all the way out to the park and it is really a nice trail. And they're putting grass seed out and it, it's really looking good. So if you haven't been out there lately, you might want to check it out. It looks, looks very nice. Oxtoberfest is coming up September 21st. This is free to, and, and available to anybody who would like to come up and enjoy it and get a little German heritage excitement. Yes, there's beer. And, uh, let's see, deer permits. One of the things that the city manager and I talked about is if people get a bow hunting deer permit and they don't take any deer, then they will move to the end of the line for the following year. And that's something that some residents had, has for, and, and I appreciate the city manager's willingness to, to take that up. So hopefully we'll get people who are serious about taking the deer and then we can get to a, we'll still have them. There just won't be 17 in my backyard. I have film at seven. All right. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So, Ms.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.